We're gonna go ahead and start. Good morning, welcome to our June regular council meeting. It's nine oh, I don't have the time in front of me, nine oh four. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Mr. Ford's on his way in, so. Call the meeting to order. Mr. Curtis isn't able to be with us. He's not feeling well. He's gonna have a little surgery later this week. And he's checking in with us, and we're checking in with him. So he is abreast of everything that's going on, but just isn't gonna be able to be with us. So just keep him in your prayers, please. And with that, I will turn the prayer over to you, Mr. Smallwood.
Let us pray. Father, we love you, we praise you, we thank you for this opportunity to come together this morning and represent the people of Chesterfield County. Lord, I want to thank you for each and every person sitting at this table, giving their time. I want to thank you for each and every person that came here to take part in this meeting today. Lord, I ask that you guide our every thought, our every word, our every decision we make today, that it may be the best for the majority of the people. Lord, we ask all these things in your name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Morning. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? So Mr. Kirkley, second by Ms. Burns. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. The agenda has been adopted, and it's quite a substantial one today, but we'll get through it. All right, we have a special recognition. This is something that I'm always prepared for the meetings. I have lots of notes, my highlighter, my scissors, my tape, I have it all together. But this is one part of the meeting that I'm just really not as prepared for. And it's because today we are saying not goodbye, but see ya next time in another way to three men who have been so impactful on our county. They have a combined eighty-five years of service. I think Tim said that he started when he was twenty-nine. Heath was twenty-seven.
Fourteen.
Oh fourteen, yeah. Anyway, they were babies. And thinking about them coming to our county and serving this county for twenty-nine years. For Tim, he was the Public Works Director in nineteen ninety-six. It's hard to say nineteen anymore, that sounds so weird. And then he was promoted to Assistant Administrator in twenty thirteen. And became our administrator in twenty seventeen. Tim is a great leader. He's a behind-the-scenes kind of guy. He doesn't, this is not his thing to be out front, but he deserves this recognition because he has definitely given so much to this county, and our county is a better place because of his service. And then Heath has came to be our attorney on July first, nineteen ninety-eight. And I'll say, one thing that I think about Heath when I think about you is, when I do the prayer, I use a prayer that Reverend Mumford uses. And he says, "Give us fairness without favoritism." And you exemplify that in every way. And Heath is not retiring, as the other two are. He is gonna be a family court judge. And I can think of no compliment more than to know that we have someone there who understands fairness without favoritism in family court. And so we greatly appreciate the twenty-seven years you've given us. And then Jeff McCorn, and we're gonna call all them up with their families. I just wanted to give a little history. Jeff McCorn, I heard from Tim, came with him to the county in nineteen ninety-six on the same day. And he was a motor grader operator until twenty thirteen, and then promoted to road supervisor, and then became our public works director in twenty seventeen. And this is supposed to be a surprise for Jeff. Surprise, yeah. But he'd asked him yesterday, "Do you have your speech ready for tomorrow?" So, but Jeff is also one of, you know, a great behind-the-scenes guy. And he's so willing to help all of us on council. If any of us had questions from our constituents, he'd meet us out there and show us what the problem was. And just a hands-on, honest, hard-working, great guy. And we just appreciate your twenty-nine years of service as well. So without further ado, we'll just do these one at a time. But if we could have Tim's family join us up front.
I'm presenting this to Tim Elguay, Chesterfield County Administrator, in appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication to the county of Chesterfield South Fairland. Twenty-nine years of service presented to you from Chesterfield County.
Got two future attorneys.
Two future county attorneys.
I knew that.
You see, you're our county attorney, Assistant Administrator. Appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication to the county of Chesterfield South Fairland. Twenty-seven years of service presented to you by Chesterfield County.
Thank you, we thank you for your time, it's wonderful. Very much appreciated. It's been my honor to do this. As Mary said, Tim and Jeff are not much older than me. Somehow, I started my career the same time they did at the judicial department. They're now leaving and going to the house. I'm going back to work. Something, I did something along the same lines, but anyway. But it's been a pleasure working with Chesterfield County, all the folks. I mean, it's been like a family to me. I'm gonna miss them, but I won't be most of the time too far away. I'll be just over at your house, and I'll call you somewhere else. And I'll come back by and visit and say hello. If y'all can come by and visit me anytime. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Ruffler, I think it's safe to say that education is stood it dead to keep you in the workforce long enough.
Absolutely. And I have children when you're older.
Twenty-nine years.
Presented to Jeffrey Jeff McCorn, Chesterfield County Public Works Director, in appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication to the county of Chesterfield South Fairland. Twenty-nine years of service presented to you by Chesterfield County.
Thank you.
Jeff, you got to say something.
Down to business. And we have two sets of minutes that we need to approve. First, the May seventh, twenty twenty-seven regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve these?
Motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion. And a second, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We also have minutes from the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Is there a motion? Okay, Mr. Smallwood, a second?
Second.
All right, second by Reverend Brand. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, the bonds, payroll, and authorizations are being passed around now. We have several appointments. Ms. Jane Pig, WC, we'll read the link with a litter update.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for all you do, and we really appreciate that. Our litter campaign this year was extremely successful. We held the campaign from May three through ten, and our convenience centers had free trash acceptance during that time from our road pickup. This year, we collected, during that time, we had thirteen thousand one hundred and forty pounds of litter that was removed from our county. In addition to that, we had five thousand tires. And Palmetto Pride rates each tire as twenty-four pounds. So using that, and they stopped counting at five thousand tires. They were throwing them in the dumpsters, and they stopped counting then. So that would make a hundred and twenty thousand pounds of tires for a grand total of one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred forty pounds of litter removed from our county this year. And thank you all so much for this. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to ride around the county recently, but I encourage you to ride around because our roads look about as nice as I have ever seen them. There are still some pockets that need some work done. Also, we are fixing to kick off with the magistrates. And I will read you a note from our chief magistrate. So regarding defendants who are required for community service for the magistrate court, they will be responsible for obtaining a signature from Palmetto Pride or the official supervisor at the cleanup just to verify that the defendant attended and the work was done. And we are making a calendar, and these are the roads that are going to be worked. And if anyone needs to make any additions, I would greatly appreciate if you could let me know that as soon as possible. From District One, we're going to start with Mangum School Road and Philadelphia Church Road. District Two, Tory Road from Highway nine to one fifty-one, and one fifty-one to Sims Road and Sims Road. District Three, Landfill Road and Baker Road. District Four, Jim Rivers Road and Jack Rivers Road. District Five, Tabernacle Church Road and Lake Robinson Road. District Six, Covington Street and Manor Road. District Seven, Cattle Ridge Road and Auction Barn Road. District Eight, Orchard Road and Snow Hill Road. And District Nine, Midway Road and Saddle Brook Road. If there are any other streets, if you could let us know ASAP, because we'll be sending this to the chief magistrate, and they will set this up and set up the PTI program. June is Zero Tolerance for Litter Month. Our lieutenant governor signed that into agreement on Monday. And zero tolerance for litter is a statewide initiative. It is led by Palmetto Pride and the South Carolina Litter Control Association to raise public awareness of the state's litter laws. We are also working very diligently with the sheriff's department. Palmetto Pride has furnished some cameras on loan to go in some high-traffic areas. We also have some signs going up. And these signs are talking about at our convenience centers that every load must be covered with a tarp. Every load that's hauled, a pickup truck or a trailer, it has to be covered. And the public may not know about that, but that is the state law. And so anything that we can do, Palmetto Pride has been assisting very strongly with our efforts in the county. And they furnish litter supplies to pick up. So if any constituents in your areas want to start a litter team and want to pick up the pickup sticks, vests, litter bags, and signs that say "Litter Control Picking Up" are available. So thank you very much. As I close, I would like to say thank you especially to Tim Mubanks, because when we first started this way back, and I believe it was two thousand sixteen, he was very, very, maybe it was not sixteen, I don't know. Anyway, whenever it was, he was very supportive of our efforts. And I believe our county is very much cleaner than it has been. And thank you for all you do, and please, don't litter. Tell your children not to litter. And thank you again.
Jane, thank you for the time that you spend on that statewide committee and all that you do for the county.
All right, I'll be happy to answer any questions if anyone has a question.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
All right, Dennis Ingram, Bello Meadow.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Yes, I'm representing TTG, I'm at TTR Trail Riders. And we was trying to do a little trail ride at my own barn and stuff. So I'm here representing a group. We're just trying to see can we get our permit to get our trail ride.
Tell us a little bit more about what the event will entail, and hours, and what you plan for security.
So we plan to do like kiddie rides, bouncy houses, food trucks, a little bit of trail, the trail riding with the horses and stuff like that. Not much. And then we're doing the evening party. It'll be just like steppers, dancing, about it.
What are you planning for security?
Yeah, I would like to have five security officers.
Any other questions?
What district is it gonna be in, what part of the county?
It's in Chesterfield County.
What address district?
Pageland, one, two, five, five, nine, five, five, nine, Lester Hicks.
Lester Hicks Road?
Yes, sir.
What hours, what hours?
We'll start at twelve until, we'll say, one.
One in the morning?
Uh huh.
So I guess, I guess my question will be, the date on, the date on this, is it overlapping another one that we've already approved?
It does.
It does.
So. What's the date of the event?
The twenty, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth.
Of July.
July?
Uh huh.
So we've already got the, I know we already had that other group approach us. That was on the same exact date?
Right.
Yeah. So my concern is, I don't personally have an issue with the event. The only thing my concern is, I think we need to get some advice from the sheriff's department as far as security-wise, because if they've already allocated resources to the previous group, we need to make sure that this is not something that's gonna cause them major problems. I feel like it's important that law enforcement be involved. I think it really, really keeps things a lot calmer. A blue light for some reason, it make them.
It make them.
Make them act right.
Yeah, make them act right.
So if we could hear from the sheriff.
Yes.
Black church. Black church, right.
If you make contact with Shaquille Raine, if he can line up five people, I can't promise you that we can have people there due to the fact that we have other objectives. Shaquille Raine is the one that generally lined up for us to have all due security.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how you're gonna be able to facilitate that right now, and I'm not so sure we can have the people, but I can't promise you we'll have anybody there.
Okay. I mean, if I can't get them, I was gonna go and try to shit it down. It's probably quick before even morning time. Yeah, I know that. That's why I was wanting for the night time, just.
He need on hand security. He need on hand security. Somebody dead all the time.
I'll say, there's another question besides security. Are you gonna be using any county roads, or is it gonna stay right there on that?
My trail is in the wooded area where we stay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So no, you wouldn't be on any county roads? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
How many people do you anticipate?
I estimate three hundred. Mine is like a car show, bike show, slingshot, side by side. And then we're just doing a trail ride like throughout the daytime while they judging for the event. Yeah.
I'll share a little bit of my concerns. I think it's a fine event. I don't have any problems with it. I just think about logistically what it means for the county, for me. That's a pretty good number of people. We have two events going that day. I worry about the resources in the county. If the sheriff's department can't guarantee you coverage, even if they can, I worry a little bit having two in one day. If you have an accident at both locations, we're pulling emergency services that way. We're dealing with horses and things like that where accidents aren't unusual, right? I mean, I get it, just accidents happen. I just worry about that a little bit. These things are kind of new to me. I'm just, I guess they're just becoming kind of popular, and I get it, it sounds like a lot of fun. But I worry a little bit about the liability side of it for the county and spreading our resources too thin. I'm okay with, I think the county, I think we'll take a look at it, see how we can move forward with it responsibly. But I think we need to look at it. That's just kind of my opinion. I think we've already got one proposed for that day. I'd struggle a little bit doing two till we see what the resource demand is, and we, as a council, can look at it and just figure out the best way to move forward.
Mrs. Dennis, is it possible you could change the date?
See, that was my birthday. See, the group, the having theirs, me and them was together, and that was my birthday. That the first day I started it. And they was trying to look for another date, but they can't find another date. And so I wanted to keep my date, so, because I wanted to do a family thing, get it bigger with my family and all this. We ain't trying to do a trail ride every year, just to get it, get my, start it. But it's just not a trail ride every year.
A little human, we can both change your birthday. But that one, if you change the date, I mean, things can work out for you, but that's up to you.
Well, the other thing is, so correct me if I'm wrong, but according to the permit process, the only reason you need this permit is for the noise to exceed the noise rules after eleven o'clock. So you really don't have to have anything from us if you want to have an event up until eleven o'clock. So at between, after eleven o'clock is basically the only variance that you're asking for by getting this permit. So as a worst-case scenario, if it's gonna be difficult to try to make sure that we can get adequate security and all that, you wouldn't necessarily have to change the date. you wouldn't necessarily have to change the date, but you might have to look at cutting everything back at 11 o'clock. So you don't even need the variance. I mean, I'm not against the trail ride or anything. I'm just concerned about security.
Well, and I was just asking about the roads, because if you're not using the county roads, then that takes that factor out. But if you are, then other organizations who use our county roads have to have insurance. And, you know, we just have to make sure that our roads are taken care of. And that was my concern about the roads.
That's kind of where I was going with it as well. I mean, if we have, if we use county roads and also county resources, right? EMS, the Sheriff's Department, things like that. We want them involved, we want them to be available to you, because we want to make sure your event goes as well as it can. I do want to say that I think yours is, obviously, it sounds like it's on private property. So, you're only chasing that two-hour timeframe, it sounds like. That puts you in a little different category, I guess, for us. But on the other ones that are using county roads, I don't know if this is the right time to say this, but I think we probably ought to, let's just kind of take a look at how this first one goes and see what we need to do moving forward. Because the county roads does make it drastically different to me.
Yeah, me too.
So that's kind of where I was going with what I was saying earlier. Maybe we just kind of, let's see how this first one goes and then let's talk about it.
So, I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off on that.
Sure.
So you're saying that if we was like riding on the county road, that's where I need security and insurance policy?
You'd have to have the insurance policy, right?
So they, they wouldn't have to have it then, would they? I'm talking the other trail riders. The other one that's on that...
If they're using...
Black Creek Road?
Yeah, if they're using the county roads, then they would need to have that.
With the security part of it, normally events like this be governed by the Sheriff's Department in the county, and they use off-duty deputies normally.
Yes, sir.
Is that right, Sheriff? Off-duty deputies and the deputies, you know, they're off-duty, but, you know, serving active as a, you know, county deputy at that time. So...
So if I couldn't get five, what about one or two?
You're gonna need properly security for that many people.
Yeah, yeah.
That's gonna be the factor of it, having security.
The very first one I had, I probably had 800 people and we didn't have but two and...
See, that's not sufficient for that many people.
But we're really here to talk about that time. Can you stop it at 11 o'clock?
That would help.
I would have to if I can't, you know.
Sheriff, when could you get him an answer on when he could, if you could provide the deputies there? I think that's gonna matter right away.
Do they get paid for the service?
They pay the off-duty deputies.
I think that's where it is, Mr. Ingram. Can't get sheriffs, you'd have to shut it down at 11, but the opportunity to still be there, if you can get the sheriffs, it sounds like.
Ms. Burns?
Well, since we're not at a point right now where we can actually approve it, do we need to just...
Yeah. Well, I think, can you wait on us to vote on this in July?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are you sure? You need preparation time, planning.
I don't think... Well, we don't...
I got my, all my stuff situated. We just waiting on, see if we can get the...
All right.
So yeah, he could...
Or wait till the end of the meeting and come back.
Could we possibly just...
Later.
Hang on one second.
Let Spence get with Derek and Mr. Ingram. And if they have sufficient security, then we approve it. And if they don't...
Approve conditionally, so we can approve?
Subject to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make a motion to do that?
I'll motion that.
Okay, Mr. Price, Mr. Second, Mr. Brand, Second. Any more discussion?
First of all, I don't know, Mayor, I don't know if it's the right time, but I don't see why we don't have Mr. Ooten issue the permits based off of the requirements anyway. I don't know why we gotta have everybody come forward to council. Mr. Ooten has, does a good job issuing permits anyway in the county, but I don't know if this is the right time for that and if he'd even be up to that task, but...
I think it's just if it's that...
Yes.
I think we have to, it's after 11, and I think we have to.
That's right.
We'd probably have to change the, we'd probably have to change the ordinance, remove that language.
Okay, so there's a motion, Second, to approve conditionally. Any more discussion?
Mr. Ooten stood up like he might have something to say, so...
Oh, I didn't see you, Mr. Ooten.
If y'all approve this additionally...
Yes, sir.
As long as we get security, we won't issue a permit until we have word that he's got whatever y'all are requesting.
That's fair. Okay.
Makes sense.
That makes sense.
That's good.
All right.
We'll use the word adequate security, because I don't want there to be one deputy and they say, "We got security."
That's fine.
According to the Sheriff's Office.
Based on numbers, okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, Ms. Tamara Horton. So this is also for a special event permit? And you've kind of heard our questions. If you want to tell us a little bit about yours briefly?
Yes, ma'am, but this event is gonna be on October the 18th. And about, you know, the same things. There's gonna be trail rides, ATV rides, and it's gonna be at Sharpson Farm out on Black Creek also. So, it'll be on his private property. He's already approved it. He hired his own personal security and we have. He's supposed to be getting Chesterfield County officer involved with law enforcement.
Is this for the same location as the one that's on the date of his?
It is.
Okay, so are you gonna be using county roads?
We shouldn't be.
Because if it's like his, I'm afraid they haven't. No, no, like, it was my understanding that there was a practice run and that they did use county roads. And so we just need to have clarification on that.
You said for the trail rides?
Yeah.
Whenever they're riding the horses out. Well, he has a lot of property, a lot of property. And I know they did some of the trail rides back in the woods, back in that area, so... I didn't go personally on the trail ride, so...
I think what she's trying to say is, is that because this is kind of new and transforming, that maybe we didn't know to ask the questions on the first application. So now, we're having to go through the process and say, if we're approving a process, we're not, the only thing we're really amending is the timeframe. But we can't amend the laws that people have to have with ATVs, side-by-sides and things on county roads. So they would have to adhere to state law.
Oh, yes.
As it relates to that.
Thank you.
Whatever rules those are, you know, I think that's the...
This kind of goes back to what I was saying earlier. There's a lot of questions that keep popping up when these pop up. And that's, so, once we get through, is it July 26th? Once we get through that date, I'd kind of like to have that date before we approve anymore personally, just to let's see what we have to put in place, so we know the questions to ask and we're not coming back on you at the last minute saying, "Can you do this, can you do that?" That's not fair to you. Not trying to stop your event by any stretch. We just, we do what we're supposed to do, you know what I mean? So, let's, in my opinion, let's just see how this goes on the 26th. Let's create what we need to know based on how that goes. And then we can ask you the proper questions, I feel like, at the very next meeting. You'd still have two months ahead of time for your permitting at that point. I'm just my opinion. I mean, I don't want to slow you down. I just, and I know that's hard, but it's important that we know what's on county roads, if it's ATVs or side-by-sides.
What he just stated, will that slow your progress down?
It will. And my only concern is, we can implement that. And I think most people do know they're not supposed to have certain vehicles on the county roads, uninsured and so forth. But if someone does that on their own, I don't think, you know, the ones organizing this group should be responsible for someone who makes a careless mistake or disregards the law and does something they know they're not supposed to do.
The property that you have in the trail ride on, is it private property?
Yes, yes. And I think he's been here before also, and he's an investigator with Lancaster County, if I'm not mistaken.
That's the property for the 26th, isn't it?
No, the 26th, yes, there is one, but I don't, it's not the one...
It is.
The guy that was here.
It's the same venue as the one we approved last month.
Right.
I think, I think how, how I see it is, the only thing we're doing with this permitting process is basically a two-hour time variation for the loud music. If we establish, if we establish that, obviously, everybody's aware of that. And if we establish that we can't make a variance to any state statutes as relates to what type of vehicles are on secondary roads or anything else, all that is outside of our purview. You know, I don't see an issue with us moving forward as long as we do put the stipulation in place that law enforcement has to be involved in the security process and it has to be adequate. I don't see a problem kind of moving forward with it now. But with Mr. Smallwood, I 100% agree that this is three in two months. And instead of trying to individually make rules as we go, we're gonna have to figure out some parameters that check these boxes. And if they're checked, then we're good. And if not, we're not.
100%.
I have a question, just for my knowledge. Why are these events so popular? I've never been to one, I'm going to the next one, though.
You're going.
Is it a fundraiser?
It's not a fundraiser, but it costs a lot of money to have one. You have to pay some, the certain groups to come out to perform with the different line dances, if you are, I know you're probably familiar with some of them, maybe.
You have a surplus when you do it?
Absolutely, it's a business.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep, it's basically a business, a business opportunity.
It is, it is, it is. And you use those funds to, you know, to continue to have more in the future. So far, it's been successful. And from what I've seen, I don't stay the entire time. But from what I've seen, they have a lot of fun. And it's a way of getting people together, having safe fun. And it's much better than being in clubs and all that.
I think that's gonna be the key to the future of these permit applications before council, is the safety aspect. And I think the first time that somebody allows something catastrophic to happen, I think it would be...
It'll slow down or stop.
A totally, totally different issue. So I strongly encourage blue lights and working with law enforcement.
I agree.
What Mr. Ford just says is correct, because what you backed, I want to kind of backtrack to what you said a second ago. Organizer and promoter shouldn't necessarily be responsible for something somebody else does. And unfortunately, if it will, if it happens involving your event, doesn't mean you allowed it to happen, like Mr. Ford said, but it happened to kind of under your watch, even though it really may not have. And it's just going, the more we can prevent that, the better success you'll have moving forward. And I think the blue lights and a show of presence is always gonna be helpful when you get 800 possibly people together.
And too, Tammy, if you will, this may be a good suggestion too. The Sheriff's Department certainly need to be available and making sure that the people that you got for security certainly be licensed and bonded, because, you know.
Yes, they were off-duty, they were.
Yeah, other than law enforcement. Law enforcement is bonded. So they can enforce the laws.
Yes, sir.
So, do you...
The timeframe on this one?
It's gonna start at 10:00 that morning, 10:00 that morning.
10:00 until...
We used to say 12:00, but by the time you get everybody out, it runs a little later sometimes.
12:00. Now, just to bring to your attention, the last one that was up wanted to run it to 2:00 in the morning. So we may need to address that one with Mr. Ooten before that. Y'all need to discuss that.
You talking about the one we already approved?
No, just the one that was previously here. He was asking to it to go to 2:00 in the morning. Yes, yes. Yeah, the last one that was at the podium was 2:00 AM. She's saying to 1:00.
12:00 and 1:00 late, you know, to get everybody out.
One y'all approved was 12:00, the first one that's been approved.
Yes, based on having security.
So I don't know if y'all want to be uniform and do them all to 12:00 or...
I think it makes sense.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion?
Can I clarify, what's our motion exactly?
That's why I want him to, what's your motion, Reverend McGlynn?
My motion is that we approve her event based on the securities there with the Sheriff's Department. And you requested to go to 12:00, right?
Yes, sir.
We want to keep it uniformed.
Yes, sir.
Time's starting.
10:00 AM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. It's time for public comments. Before we ask for public comments, so we welcome all public comments. Just remember that they are limited to four minutes a speaker, 20 minutes per subject. If anyone wants to address counsel, come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Becky Wutzel. I live in Pageland. And I have some property on Airport Road. We purchased this property about, I don't know, 20 years ago, maybe, from a Kevin Plyler. And on this property, we have two buildings, two apartments in each building, so we're four duplexes. And my family's been in the rental business my entire life. These apartments are above average for, for the area, above average, period. I got a call from a man that has purchased the land adjacent to my land. And he told me what he proposes to do with this. And he said that he wanted to open an RV park. And that floored me, and I bit my tongue. And I asked how many hookups? And he said 24 hookups. And all of these tracts of land flow downhill. And I've got an area map. Area map of the land. And my land is the one that ends in 055. There is something called Beaver Pond. That's where everything will go. And I just want, I mean, he says that he's got to have $65,000 for a transformer. They're all the same. Yeah, they're all the same. But, I mean, I don't know. He would have to deal with Lynch's River. And I don't know if he has dealt with them or not. He, when he talked to me on the telephone, he led me to believe that he had already met with the zoning people. And I just happened to call the lady and Pam Jordan, I believe is her name, said that he had called, but he had not had an appointment. So I don't know where it is. An RV park, he says that he is gonna have it for two days to two weeks. Now, getting an RV out after two weeks, I think, will be quite a challenge. And I think with the rent increases, I think that it's gonna turn into a full-time dwelling place. So, mobile home park or whatever.
Thank you. This is, this is public comment, so we can't respond?
I, my address.
No, no, oh, your address.
Have any questions?
Well, this is public comment, so we're not able to have any conversation with you. But just know that we'll take that as information and we are discussing RV parks later in our agenda.
I've emailed a couple of you.
Yes. Thank you for coming. All right, moving now to public hearings. We're gonna start with Walmart-Feele Lou. Ordinance Public Hearing, is there a motion to open a public hearing?
Some motion.
All right, Mr. Smallwood, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify. Oh, is there anyone who wants to address counsel on this, sorry? Okay.
Do you mind stating... Do you mind, do you mind stating for, uh, for each of these ordinances, a generalized description so the public knows, please?
Sure, so this is Walmart fee and lieu, um, ordinance rather than us, and we give Walmart a, a fee instead of them paying taxes. So we're just extending that fee and lieu. Is that enough?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying for the public.
Sure, sure.
Give them an idea instead of them just hearing us.
But sometimes, I know we understand it, but if, if you all want to expand on any of this, that's fine. All right, no one wishes to address counsel, I'll assume the same two will make the motion in second to close it. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, B is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six cash rule fire department budget ordinance. And we're just approving what they have given to us for their budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Okay, Ms. Burns, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel on the ordinance? All right, um, hearing none. I assume the same two people, yeah. Close the public hearing, um, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed, now we're on twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Harris Creek Roll Fire Department Budget Ordinance, same as above. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Okay, Ms. Burns, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel on this ordinance? All right, hearing, or seeing no one, we have to close the public hearing, I see the same two people make the motions to close. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed, all right, we're moved, moving on to Alligator, Roll Fire Department Budget Ordinance, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Mr. Kirkley, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel? Okay, seeing no one, um, the same two, I assume will make the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Public hearing is now closed, moving on to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six General Fund Budget Ordinance. This is where we're voting on the budget for next year. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Okay, we got a, Mr. Ford, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Bishop McLendon, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel on our, on this ordinance for the general fund budget? All right, seeing no one, I assume the same two will make the motion in the second to close the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, um, G is our tattoo ordinance. Is there, oh, sorry, we do have to do F first. All right, F is general obligation bond ordinance. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Okay, there's a motion, second, Mr. Price, okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Hey, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel on this ordinance? If not, I assume the same two make the motions to close. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed, now we're at G, I got ahead of myself, uh, the tattoo ordinance. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
All right, Mr. Kirkley, is there a second? Okay, second by Ms. Burns, any discussion?
Yes.
Now, we're just, now, we're just having a discussion on whether or not we want to open it, not whether or not we're in the public hearing yet. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel on this ordinance? Do you want, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, uh, I'm got, I have some concerns from the Christian base. These tattoos shop gonna pop up everywhere. A lot of believers, uh, go strictly by what that Bible say about tattoos on your body. That is a concern among Christian believers.
Madam Chair, I can, I can address some of that.
Will you please, sir?
There, there are some restrictions in the, uh, ordinance with regard to, uh, location of these facilities, and we can discuss that more when we get to the actual reading of the ordinance. Uh, much of the, uh, regulation of these facilities is dictated by state statute as far as, uh, health and safety protocols, those type things. But there are, uh, provisions in the ordinance about the location of these facilities as far as I believe, and also in the state statute as far as, uh, distance from churches, schools, those types of things.
Same guideline like a, a liquor store or something like that?
No, sure, it, no, it would not. And, and there's not the, uh, same process through the state that you have to go through to get that, that type of license. And I'm trying to get to the ordinance here.
There are some great concern about it, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, the ordinance has written provides that facilities shall not be located within one thousand feet of a church, school, or playground. And then there's language in here about the way that distance is to be measured, uh.
We can talk later about it.
Yeah, again, and, and, uh, yes, we can talk about that when we get to the actual reading. But there are, there are provisions in the ordinance regarding that matter.
Thank you. In other words, Reverend McLennan, if you want a tattoo shop at your church, you're gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
All right, motion by Ms. Ford, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Now we're moving over to H, let's see, Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment. Public hearing regarding that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
There's a motion by Reverend Brand, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to address counsel regarding the Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment?
Again, would you mind just so the public will know exactly what we're talking about?
Sure, so what we would like to do is to implement a fee, a solid waste management fee, and it would be thirty-eight dollars to anyone in county, eighteen dollars if you're in, thirteen dollars if you're in town. And it's a, a one-time fee for the year. This will eliminate us collecting money at the centers themselves, and it also should help our taxpayers save some money, because I think Michelle figured it out, it's about half of what it would be if you took two bags of trash. Yeah, so, um, I, I will say, I've had a couple of people call me about it, and most people thought that it was per month, and once I explained that it was per year, they were more okay with it. And, um, I did have someone say, well, he has many rental properties, and he was concerned about, you know, this is an added fee to him. And I did tell him, you know, this is actually gonna save his renters, I believe, some money. It, it would be one that he would need to pass on to his renter, but I think it's a justifiable one because it's something that they're paying anyway. So, I mean, that's been my feedback. If anybody else has any.
So I'll, I'll, uh, chime in a little bit on this. This, this was something that was brought up, uh, because the, the county does have such a large issue with trash. You know, we, we're not trying to raise taxes on anyone or anything like that, we're trying to figure out a way for, instead of there being hidden fees that you're paying in your millage, which that's historically been that way because roughly the money that we collect at the convenience centers only covers half of what the actual expense is for the trash service for the county. So basically, the other half is being subsidized from your property taxes. So we talked about trying to do something to rectify that, and instead of collecting money at the convenience centers, we felt like it would be more advantageous to set a, to set a one-time fee per year on property taxes for a solid waste fee to make it where you don't have to send any money with your, with your kid to take the trash to the dump. And you don't have to worry about your, you know, your kid taking the ten dollars and going to buy a vape instead of taking the trash to the dump and throwing the trash on the side of the road, which happens, it's happened historically a lot. So this is what I feel like is not an invasive amount of money. It's basically thirteen dollars for, uh, the, the people who live in municipalities that do provide trash services, and, you know, like Towne Page, and they have a dumpster that's sitting there, uh, also that you can take your trash and dump it to if you're a town resident. So their fee would be thirteen dollars per year, just a little over a dollar a month. The fee associated with municipalities that are not providing those trash services would be thirty-eight dollars per year, and it's not per parcel, it's only, it's only per residence.
Right.
So roughly three dollars a month is what it would end up working out to, that you have, uh, unlimited, dumping abilities as long as it's not for commercial purposes. So if you run a garbage business and you go and clean everybody's house out for them, and you take trash loads and trash loads, it just, this is not gonna affect you, you, you still gonna have to come up, figure out a way to get rid of the trash. But, but this is what we're trying to do, it's not costing anybody any more money, in my opinion. We're moving some, some fees that you're having to pay over here that you didn't already know you were paying, and we're putting it on a line item specifically, so you know exactly what it is, and it could change, because we do expect the tipping fees, uh, to go up some percentage because there's gonna be more trash being brought to, to the landfill, so.
But basically, it's revenue neutral, is what you're saying.
Very much revenue neutral.
And also, it gives our law enforcement more teeth, because like Ethan said, there's no, there's no excuse to not have your trash taken.
I had some concerns about some of the residents in District Number Two, about, I guess you sent out, uh, information in the newspaper that this would take place, uh, wondering who's who. How the people at the landfill gonna know, uh, who's who? Whether they bringing the trash from another county, uh, how do they present themselves at the landfill for them to know that they live in the county?
Other, other counties use your driver's license. Kershaw County, you have to show your driver's license.
And so in order to dump.
You gotta show your license.
Our county does too.
Yeah, yeah, I just want.
Driver's license, yeah.
And this fee is not unique to our county, uh, many counties have these fees. It's, it's the transparency that Mr. Ford was talking about, it's pretty much revenue neutral overall. And then it does help, you know, our law enforcement.
And the, the other aspect of that is that we had a discussion about was, um, so we live so close to North Carolina line, we have a lot of people that may be bringing trash across the state line and dumping trash here. That is a concern, but my rebuttal, my rebuttal to that, just as to consider, to consider is, if we prohibit somebody who is gonna take the time to bring trash and bring it to our dumping, dumping facility, are we gonna turn them around and they gonna find the next dirt road that's still in this county and dump their trash because we didn't take it? So then in return, we're gonna end up having to go back out there at some point and pick it back up. So it might be collateral cost to us, but I don't feel the need on the front end that we don't really need to be policing where this trash is coming from unless it turns into a major issue, because I think this is the way we can, the reason why we're doing it is we want to try to provide a place for people to dump their trash to keep the community cleaner. You know, I would love not to have to provide anything, I'd love for everybody to deal with their own stuff appropriately, but we, we ain't all adults. So I think that's a double-edged sword about how you identify where you're from. You know, we got people living in new, new housing developments in Pageland, you can go in one subdivision over there right now, and half of them have North Carolina plates. And people say, well, they're getting around taxes, well, they might be getting around taxes on their car, but they're paying the full boat on the homeowner's side instead of getting a residential discount, so I, I don't want to enforce that because actually, we're making more money off their taxes for them paying the full boat. So it's a double-edged sword that you got to look at all sides.
And, and just a suggestion, the reason I asked that question, uh, instead of turning the people away, even if, you know, they're not resident here, why not just charge them for the trash that they have, like they normally been doing, and just make sure the residents here get? I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Well, that's what we just got away from.
You know, you know, just don't let them take the trash out of the counter and throw it in the counter, charge them for what they bring, like they normally do.
I think one of the reasons for this too is so that the, uh, people at the landfill are not handling money.
Right.
Right.
Get away from the money handling.
It's, it's a, it's a big time saver, you got Waste Connection, I talked about it in my community, we pay five hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year, doing it this way, you paying thirty-eight dollars, you saving five hundred all year.
You're having to take it yourself, but it is, it is an option for saving.
Yes, it is, I like it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. If you'll stand up, please, and come to the microphone.
The four parks I have on Airport Road, I already, um, pay for sanitation, and they have four trash cans. You know, would I have to pay that in addition?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that not a double taxation?
You have the choice of, of doing that.
The, and, and I agree that that is a situation that, that we talked about also, because at my house, I pay solely in sanitation to come pick my trash up in the county. But my wife also very frequently takes things because I think her and Amazon man got something going on. And, and there's no way she can put all our trash in our dumpster, so she has to go to the dump as well with mattresses, whatever, so I think, in retrospect, I think we all have to utilize the convenience center at some point. And in your situation, it may be a little bit more invasive to you than others.
I would have to be the one taking it to the recycle center.
That's right, and I also want to attribute a lot of our trash problems could probably be, um, associated with more of the rental units in this county than the residences as well, so I think that's gonna be a trade-off.
And see, I mean, paying four times, I already paid for four trash cans, that's, I mean, whenever I, I'll ask about selling it, that was one thing that really spiked was the price of the, um, the trash disposal now, so that would even, put even more.
Did you pay every three months?
What do I pay for three months? I believe it's like two ninety-seven, so.
How much?
Two ninety-seven.
Per apartment?
No.
That's for all four.
Per, every three months?
Yes.
Look, look at what you save if you get someone to just take your trash to the dumps.
If I get someone, that's the problem, I'm not able to do it, I'm sixty-five years old.
I got a son, he'll be happy to come take it for three ninety-seven.
But, but, but on, on the other side of that is, whether you knew it or not, we were already taxing you on top of your property taxes for half the subsidized part that was already on your tax bill, so it's not necessarily a hundred percent, you know, the, there is a little bit more in cost incurred, but we were already taking that from you without even, you know, without you knowing it as well.
There are lots of things.
Absolutely, we're good at that.
That, that concerns me, that may be a, a tipping point.
Absolutely.
Questions?
So in your specific case, Ms. Wutzel, you're saying that you don't, the, the tenants don't take their own trash off?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they take it out to the, to the rollout.
Got you.
I mean, these people live on Airport Road. I mean, these people live on Airport Road, they aren't gonna take it.
Yeah.
Five, eight miles, whatever it would be.
Talk to my wife about, we'll get our son to do it for you.
Um, I mean, we also mow, mow the grass because we want all the grass to be mowed at the same time, I mean, so that was, that's just a concern.
Got a question.
Thank you. If you wish to address, if you wish to address council, come forward and state your name and where you live.
I'm Ravanna Black, I live in Page, outside Page, on one fifty-one, and, uh, thank you, Ethan, for explaining that. Just, uh, discussing with people who haven't heard. The, we first moved here, we found out we didn't have to pay for recycling and we have a garden, so we compost, so we gen- we made a point of putting f- extra effort into throw more recycling and composting. And this, and, and, uh, the issue being is that would discourage our, we just sort of put it all in trash, sorry, paying for it. Um, so don't bother to recycle. And with the thirty-eight dollar fee, you saying that it might even go up? Could be thirty-eight this year, this coming year, or be a hundred the year, the next year, how do we know it wouldn't go up, increase? That's, that's the issue, and then so many elderly people live here, a lot of people, um, I know someone has his own business, so he, his wife, they use, they have a dumpster, and his mother-in-law and his sister-in-law use that. They have three separate properties using that dumpster, so they'd be all be assessed thirty-eight dollars.
Yeah, so, so as far as what I was, uh, saying about the fees could go up is we could only base our numbers off of the amount of trash that we collect over the last two or three years to say, okay, this is what we, we expect to take in this much. But by changing this fee setup, we don't know if it might increase the, the, the weight of the trash, which is how we have to get rid of it ourselves, take it to the landfill. So if it, if it, we got, we have some room in there, but it wouldn't be fair to, to speculate too far out at the first year because we would be overtaxing. So we, I'm, just rough numbers, I'm thinking we left about a twenty percent buffer in our budget to increase the tipping fees, uh, that we're, we gonna have to pay to haul off twenty percent more trash by doing it this way. But if, but after this year comes around, next budget cycle, if we see that we still had to take two hundred thousand dollars out of our general fund to cover, you know, the change and increase of trash dumping fees that we're having to pay, then we may have to look at changing those numbers because right now, we're, we're just going off of educated guesses, so we don't really know how much that's gonna change. So that's why I said that things could change, it's gonna be kind of fluid, we just got to see the amount of trash. We don't wanna make any money off of it, we, we're just trying to transparently show exactly what it's costing the taxpayers for, for that service.
I see, I just, uh, I'm just, again, I can see how those of us who would say, well, we don't want to recycle anymore, we just start making more trash, so we'd more likely more increase.
Good.
This is just, I'm thinking of ways to encourage people to reuse and recycle.
It's hard to encourage humanity.
Yes, I see that, yes, I just think that as many thinks about it.
Absolutely.
Morning.
Morning.
Jerry Morris, I live on seven forty-two. First council meeting that I've attended, watched the last few, uh, been a lot of discussions about it, but I think there's still some answers we need. Ms. Ford, uh, a few meetings back, you asked a question about the income that we have now in our expenses, and we really didn't get into a discussion about it, I think someone back here brought up how they came up with the thirty-five and thirteen of taking so much trash, and, and that's a, that's a good formula to start with. But I'm wondering, you're saying we wanting to break even on it. Are we gonna have money in here to improve what we got? The convenience centers, uh, roadside pickup, what are we gonna do? It was also talked about, we're gonna have to put a little more faith in the Sheriff's Department to enforce a little pickup. I think Ms. Burns, you mentioned it was a good idea, but it's not gonna solve the problem. I think you made that statement, and she's right, this is not gonna solve the problem. We cannot depend on law enforcement because they got their hands full. If I'm not mistaken, you have two guys, litter and animal? You know which one of those two is gonna come first when they get a call? Animal control, because they got the complainant right there, they got the offender sitting over here, and they want some resolution right then. You call in, you find trash beside the road, you can call it in, it's not a nine-one-one emergency. More than likely, your name's gonna go on the list, and as soon as that officer's freed up, he will probably get to you. We talking about the North Carolina problem. I live on seven forty-two, if you go to Davis Grove Church Road, make a right, go all the way to the end of it, you run out into North Carolina. Within sight of the North Carolina line, somebody, which somebody's already stole the sign. When you enter s- North Carolina, the sign is gone. But there's a area that was really abused a couple of years ago. And I wanted to appreciate Jeff, but he's gone. Him and his crew spent a lot of time, money, and effort to clean this dump site up two years ago. For some reason, I rode down that road Monday night within eyesight of where the North Carolina sign is at. Someone has already dropped about twelve large, black trash bags and some bedding. You turn around and come back out going a different way, I went in on Baskin's Road, but I come all the way back out, Davis Grove Church Road. After you pass the area that used to be the bad dump that Jeff and his people cleaned up, there's about twenty large truck tires dumped already. Jane spoke of the tire problem, we got a problem, folks. So where's the money gonna come to, to keep the cleanup effort going, is what I'm concerned about. We call our convenience centers convenience centers, folks, we need to do some work there. It's anything but a convenience center. If you think about it, and we all get older in age, you see some people come out here, they can hardly get the trash out of the back of the car unless let's get it up in the dumpster. We're gonna encourage people to take refrigerators, couches, all this stuff to the dumpster. The dumpster is six feet high. How do you get it up and hover in it? Now, please, understand, I'm not complaining about thirty-five dollars. If I thought it would clean our county up, I'd be willing to pay a hundred, a hundred fifty, whatever it takes to clean the county up. But as we look at these convenience centers, and I think Ms. Burns, you said, in the future, are we gonna need more sites? Did you not say that? We really didn't, nobody picked up on that much either, but yeah, we're gonna probably need more sites if our county's gonna grow. But as we look at building a new site or improving the sites, we need to think about the accessibility. Chesterfield right here, appreciate the people, nice people working the gate and all, but it's a bottleneck. You know, really, the general, just baggage, trash, a good idea would be to put that dumpster in the middle where you could hit it from two sides. People go in, throw the trash out, keep on going. As far as the, um, other dumpsters for couches, appliances, and stuff like that, somehow, it needs to be built up where you could pull up beside it in a pickup and just basically kind of flip it rather than just, I'll tell you now, if you can't handle it, just set it on the ground, then somebody comes over with a front-end loader, picks it up and throws it in the dumpster. Again, I'm not here to slam anyone, but as we go forward with this thing, and this is really, I guess, the first meeting that I've ever heard of about wa- waste management. But I've picked up a lot of trash on seven forty-two. And I've done my share, and I will continue to do it, but it's gonna take all of us to do it. If you go just across the bridge, I mean, I'm not slamming him either. If you cross the bridge right down here before you get to the schoolhouse, there's a bag of trash. Been there for probably three to four weeks. How many citizens just like myself, people just like you on council, law enforcement, everything else, how many people pass that bag of trash? But you know what, we all say, I'm not gonna do it, somebody else can do it, but you and I got to do it. So appreciate your time. I guess I sound probably a little bit irritated, and I am, but not at you guys. It's just a problem that we're dealing with.
Well, we appreciate you, Mr. Mars.
You know, I would like to come back before you guys with some more ideas in the near future. Simple stuff that I think can help, can make a difference if we just all pull together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mars, yeah. Great comments.
Good ideas.
Um, could y'all possibly review after six months of the fees? It, now it's probably gonna be like something new, everybody's gonna want to do it, and then consider the fee adjustment? Because a, a twelve-month period is a long time, and a bag of trash I can pick up. But I see mattresses, I see chest of drawers, things that, I mean, I can't even pull out of the ditch. So that's gonna be a different weight.
Yep.
And maybe six months, consider.
I, I think, I think that whole thing is gonna be fluid and, and, like I say, we're not trying to generate any revenue off of it whatsoever.
We don't wanna lose any either.
We don't wanna lose any either, and that's, that's kind of where we've probably spent quite a while trying to figure out those little numbers.
Is there some reason that we are not mandated as a county to recycle?
We have, we have so many laws in place to try to mandate people, and they still can't figure it out.
I just wondered, because it seems like we're, we're very behind the times.
I agree.
I think a little bit of that, though, is, e- even if you put those laws in place, it's enforcement. Right now, it's against the law to litter, but yet here we are discussing a problem that's already a law. So I mean, it's, it's hard to enforce people, like you said a while ago, Mr. Ford, humanity is hard to encourage, enforce on people. Um, I think that this, I, I'll just give you my two cents worth, since we've been talking on it this long, let's kick it for five more minutes, but...
Maybe not five.
Okay, I'll be quick. When this came up, I was against it early on, I'll be honest with you, I just said, ah, you know what? But as you look at how many other counties are doing it and why they're doing it, it kind of makes sense. So for me, I live in town, I pay trash service that I can't opt out of. But I still go to the dump two or three times a year, and it probably costs me twenty, twenty-five, thirty bucks minimum. Again, I have the same Amazon problem Mr. Ford does, um, so it, it doesn't really matter to me. But I ask a lot of people in the county, and if I ask probably ten or fifteen people, I bet I had two people that were really against it. Two or three that didn't care, and ten, so if you had, it probably saved me a little bit of money. So percentage-wise of the people that I spoke to, it just kind of matters. But my issue with it's the same, and we're gonna learn this as we go, is I don't think you're gonna stop the guy from pushing the mattress out of the back of the truck on the side of the road because he can go to the dump for free versus paying three dollars for that mattress or seven dollars. You don't change hearts with tax bills.
No.
Um, but we've gotta do something to try to make a difference, and making the dump free hopefully will encourage at least a small percentage of that. And if you look at it, you brought up changing the, looking at the fees at six months, this is an annual fee, it's thirty-eight dollars for a year.
But you got a plan ahead for the next year, just see what.
You do, and, and that, all that data, when we sit down and start after the first year you're talking about, it will be looked at. Um, my fear is, and this, I fear this, and I'll go ahead and tell you that I'm gonna argue against it, is the fee will go up. I'm gonna fight against that because it starts, to me, it's, it's, I'm at a threshold with it anyway, um, where you're forcing people to pay that we'll never go over there. But again, it comes down to percentages, and right now, the percentages for the county say that it's good for well over fifty-one percent of the people. So you've gotta make decisions based on the majority, and that's not always fair, and I get that, and that's, that's what's hard about sitting here, and I'm not making excuses for why it bothers you but doesn't bother your neighbor, right? I'm on both sides of it, I do.
Even with the recycling, I remember when Charlotte did it and they dumped it all in the wrong trash bin.
Right.
I mean, we've gotta start somewhere, and you can't make everybody do the right thing.
That's right.
And there is a lack of sense of pride and ownership in this county, especially on the west end.
I concur.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and it's, as much discussions we're having today, I think that this just shows that it's important that we have citizen input, and we appreciate you all coming, whether we give you the answers that you wanna hear or whether we, we do what you want us to do, we just appreciate having the opportunity to have these. Yeah, something else to say?
Oh, question is, um, I'm curious, uh, I thought it was just for the bag trash. Is it bulk, the bulk price would go away and the?
Everything, everything. There's no money to be collected at the fee, at, at the convenience centers.
That wasn't clear.
I'm sorry that that wasn't clear, but that was one point of clarification that I wanted to make earlier too, because that was something that I had folks concerned about as well, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, the property owner.
All right, and you got the renter living inside South Carolina, but he owns a car. There's no way that, there's no way to action?
And, well, their owners, the renters rent in South Carolina, but the owners live in Virginia.
Yep.
How's that gonna be?
The person who owns the property is gonna be the one, the one responsible paying for it. It is up to them whether they go after their renter to pass the fees on or not. But the only, the only people that we have the ability to say that, that this fee is associated with every residence is for us to put it on a line item on the tax bill. If I'm, I'm a renter, uh, I own rentals myself, that's what, so what a lot of other people do, it's on us to say whether we wanna, we wanna incur that cost ourself or whether we wanna pass it along to them. And with the rate rents are now, let's just say if each unit costs you three dollars a month, you can't go buy, everybody goes to Starbucks and can buy a cup of coffee for seven bucks.
Right.
But so the three dollars a month for me, when, in, in this rental market.
I probably shouldn't say anything during my work, but in my forty-nine years of doing evictions, and I know landlords is concerned about this type of thing. When they, all these years we've done evictions, and we're gonna do this eviction, and these people leave behind all this trash, and that landlord's gonna have a way to get rid of this trash without not having to pay for, for a minimal amount of money. But I can assure you, I've done more evictions than anybody in this room.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, great discussion, really good discussion. Is there a motion, yeah, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Ms. Burns, is there a second? Reverend Brand, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. All right, moving on to ordinance readings and resolutions. Before we do that, I just wanna say, that's all important conversation, all of that, just like Mr. Ford was saying, for us to let you know what each of this is about so that when we get to this part, it's, it's not hard to get through. It's, um, you understand what we're, what we're.
I think a lot of it got cleared up too in the end, when the young lady asked, is it not only just bags, but?
Right, I agree. All right, so onto ordinance readings and resolutions. Um, A Walmart Fee and Lew ordinance, is there a motion to approve this third reading?
Motion.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, Cash Roll Fire Department, is there a motion to approve this third reading?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Burns, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. C, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, Harris Creek Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, third reading, is there a motion? Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, um, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, Alligator Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, third reading, is there a motion?
Don't move.
All right, Mr. Kirkley, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Burns, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, the Geo Bond Ordinance, third reading. Oh, wait, 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 right, twenty twenty-five, that's why I need to check them off. Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, General Thudden, Budget Ordinance, third reading.
Motion.
Right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Smallwood. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at the Geo Bond Ordinance, third reading, is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Smallwood, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at Title Ordinance, third reading, is there a motion to approve this third reading?
Don't move.
And Mr. Kirkley, second by Ms. Burns, any more discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Solid Waste Management Plan, third reading, is there a motion to approve this third reading?
Motion.
Mr. Ford, is there a second? Okay, Bishop McLendon, any? Okay, Bishop McLendon, any more discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, now, um, down to aye ordinance, authorizing the sale of property W, Second Reading.
Motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Ford, all right, second by Mr. Price. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, and now, we have a proclamation declaring June twenty-twenty-five as Elevate Fatherhood Month. Um, you all saw this in your packet, um, and I'll give it to Mr. Ruffner.
Is there anything we need to know about this? This is just a, sorry.
I mean, I think we're all, we all understand what the proclamation is about, I just wanna make sure. Okay, um, is there a motion to approve? Okay, Ms. Burns, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, we, um, are down to proclamation declaring June twenty-twenty-five, oh, gosh, sorry about that. Um, I have a resolution to support a prescribed burn. Yeah, sorry. So I have Ms. Lynn Askins here, she's a Refuge Manager for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. Lynn, welcome to the longest meeting of the year. We're glad to have you. Um, I asked Lynn to, to, if she would come and just tell us a little bit about, you know, why it's important that we have prescribed burns and how these affect our county, since we have so much forest in our county. So, thanks Lynn.
Thank you, Chair Anderson, and thank you for having me today. Again, my name is Lynn Askins, I'm the Refuge Manager at Carolina Sandhills National Wildlife Refuge in Magbey. Uh, I've been in that capacity for nineteen years. I'm here today on behalf of the South Carolina Prescribed Fire Council and the practitioners who implement prescribed burns. We are here to advocate for the adoption of a resolution supporting the use of prescribed fire in our county. Prescribed fire is the science-based use of fire to enhance forest, brush, and grassland areas under specific environmental conditions. On average, fire managers use prescribed burning to improve seventeen thousand acres a year in Chesterfield County. The controlled and intentional application of fire offers benefits that align with our county's ecological, natural resource, economic, and cultural interest. Ecologically, prescribed fire plays a crucial role in maintaining healthy ecosystems. By removing excess vegetation, which fuels wildfires, prescribed burns help prevent the spread of destructive fires that threaten our communities and natural resources. Moreover, fire is a natural part of our ecosystem. Prescribed burning can mimic natural fire occurrence and promote health of native vegetation. Chesterfield County is the focal area for longleaf pine ecosystem, one of the most diverse in the world. Conservation partners collaborating, as the Sandhills Longleaf Pine Conservation Partnership, have secured more than three-point-seven million dollars in landowner assistance to restore, enhance, and manage longleaf pine on more than forty-two thousand acres in the county. A thriving longleaf pine ecosystem is maintained with prescribed fire. Many species, including game birds and pollinators, rely on these fire-maintained habitats. This resolution complements these investments made in longleaf pine. Economically, prescribed fires reduce the number and severity of wildfires, which lowers firefighting costs and minimizes property damage. Additionally, healthier forests contribute to the local economy through increased timber and pine straw production, healthy wildlife habitats that support hunt leases, and enhanced recreational opportunities for both our residents and tourists that recreate here. Culturally and historically, prescribed fire is a centuries-old land management practice utilized by indigenous communities for ecosystem stewardship that, combined with modern science, continues to shape its use today. So why are counties adopting prescribed fire resolutions? County resolutions create a more supportive environment for land managers to use prescribed burning, allowing them to focus on achieving land management goals such as restoring forests and improving wildlife habitat. County resolutions raise awareness about the benefits of prescribed burning, which can alleviate concerns or misunderstandings about fire in, uh, the ecosystem. County resolutions help facilitate collaboration among different agencies and landowners, helping to coordinate efforts and ensure successful implementation of these burns. County resolutions recognize that prescribed burning under planned weather conditions is more desirable and reduces health concerns from hazardous smoke from unplanned ignitions and wildfires. Finally, county resolutions encourage regulators to work closely with land managers, agencies, and landowners to ensure a fair and balanced approach to smoke management guidelines. In conclusion, we urge the council to adopt this prescribed fire resolution to ensure the health and safety of our local community and landscapes. I hope this information highlights the numerous benefits of prescribed burning and promotes its responsible use as part of the county's comprehensive land management plan.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Yeah, Lynn, um, also has offered, you can tell them what they offer is about coming out to a prescribed burn.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I've been, uh, working with the chair over the last couple of years to try to get her out to show how we do prescribed burning at the Refuge. Um, at the Refuge, we do the bulk of the burning in the county. On average, we do about twelve thousand acres a year. And we regularly have folks out, uh, the National Weather Service, county officials such as yourself, we will dress you up in nomex and keep you safe, and we'll show you how we implement the burns. The problem with doing it is I wish I could say, well, come next Tuesday at nine o'clock, we're gonna do a burn. But because we have to implement these burns under specific conditions, everything, the stars have to align before we ever light a match. And so unfortunately, I haven't been able to have the chair out just yet. Every time we've planned, uh, we've either not done the burn or your schedule's not worked out. But I offer that to anyone on council, if you would like to come out, and it's a fun day, I make it fun. Um, I'd love to have you out to show you how we do burns and to show you all the planning and, um, the, the safe practices we have in place to ensure that it's done in a correct way.
I got, uh, one thing, most people don't, most people could care less, but, uh, the turkey population and the birds that nest on the ground, do we, do we make sure that that is, uh, that the timing of these fires don't, um, uh, affect the nesting, the nesting areas for the turkeys and the quail where we're not burning at the time that they're on the nest or that they're so small, uh, pullets that where they can't get into the trees to get away from the fire?
Okay, so I'm gonna answer this in two ways. I'm gonna answer it one, once as a, as a prescribed fire practitioner, but also as a wildlife biologist. So, um, the majority of the burning that we do in the county is really January, February, March. And so that does play into the, you know, the idea that a lot of nesting is not going on yet, 'cause that occurs later. However, I'm not gonna say we don't burn, because really, we have favorable weather conditions just about year-round. And so we like to say, as prescribed fire practitioners, every day is a burn day until it's not. So on the wildlife biology side of things, we know from science that turkeys, quail, and other ground-nesting birds will not nest in areas that have not been burned. They prefer to put their nest in areas that have what we call a two-year rough, so two years since they were burned. So it's really important that you continue to have a three-to-four-year rotation with burning, or these game birds will abandon areas and not nest. So it's one of those situations where it's really important that we continue to burn so that we have the wildlife population. If we don't, we're gonna lose it. And yes, I will say, if we implement a burn, April, May, we could possibly lose individuals, but we're burning for the entirety of the population to ensure they stay.
Long as it's a topic.
It, it is discussed, believe me.
As a wildlife biologist, in simple words, I've heard what you, you read to us, uh, in your own words, what is the solution, uh, to what you gave us this morning? In your own words, what is the resolution?
The resolution is just in supporting the right for, of landowners to continue to burn in Chesterfield County under the conditions as prescribed by the South Carolina Forestry Commission and the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control, who manage, uh, dictates the smoke management guidelines. So this isn't just, um, these burns are conducted, um, for wildlife and for habitat, but they're, you know, you have to get a burn permit, you have to follow smoke management guidelines. So basically, the county is saying that we recognize that this is a regulated activity and that it's conducted in a safe way.
Definitely an essential tool.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution in support of prescribed burning?
Don't move.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Kirkley. Second, Mr. Ford. Any more discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Askins, you have our full support of the resolution. All right, um, we're now down to L. Emergency ordinance declaring temporary moratorium on issuance of permits for establishment of mobile home parks, RV parks, and subdivisions. I think we heard from Ms. Wetzel earlier, but I'm gonna call Mr. Ooten if you'll come up and just tell us a little bit about, um, what we're facing here. In addition to what Ms. Wetzel's already educated us on.
This will be a brief education.
Good.
And when, when I get finished talking, is that gonna be okay for me to tell a story about Mr. Eubank?
No, no.
We can change the rules today.
No. I feel like, you know, I deal with our county ordinances on a daily basis. Our subdivision ordinance, our RV ordinance, and our mobile home park ordinance, they all have loopholes. I need something in black and white that says, I think it was you that said something about a check-off sheet. If you meet this criteria, then it's good to go. I've got so many now that's in, that has gray in it, and it's left up to me to make a decision. So that's why I fully support putting a moratorium on these three items. And let's meet, let's talk about it, let me explain the loopholes. I can do it in a public session, but then I think that's gonna, it's gonna lead a charge for everybody to try to come in and get it before we can get things right.
No, I, I think the proper order would be to, um, go ahead and, and vote on this and then send it to committee, if y'all are okay with that. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Price, okay.
Second.
And this is for the, the declaring a temper, temporary moratorium. So there's a motion by Mr. Price, taken by Mr. Ford. Any more discussion?
Yeah. I, 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 since he's tied up, I, I think it's important, I, I deal closely with Derek's offices over here, because I am in the construction business. Uh, there are a lot of loopholes there, and I think we need to close those, uh, close them down to some degree that's still fair for both the ends of the county, where we're not stopping growth, we're just being structured with growth. I've seen it happen in the county. I've seen mobile home parks come in, I talked with you about that, Mary. I've seen it happen with no, with, with no, uh, approval from the county. Uh, people chop lots up, they put the mobile homes on based on what is currently in the code, and it turns into a mobile home park without Mr. Ooten at all having any access to restrictions or anything along those lines. I think that example is why it's important to at least have a moratorium in place to where we can, we can have some honest discussions about what needs to happen, uh, working alongside of Mr. Ooten and his staff.
Sure, and just like Ms. Wetzel's concerns too. So I'd like to charge, after we, did we vote?
No, we haven't.
Y'all so much. We're still in discussion. So, um, after we vote, I'll send that to committee.
Yeah, we got, we got to get this right.
Absolutely.
Yep, and things, things are changing so much, so fast, that, you know, things we never considered three years ago now are a real issue. And, you know, people are really good at, uh, going, going around, doing whatever they gotta do to accomplish whatever it is. And I, I can't hate them for it, I can't be mad at them, I'm, 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 I'm cut from that same cloth myself.
I was fixing to say.
But, but at the end, but at the end of the day, uh, I think that this is something that we got to get right.
And then bringing down, my concern is bringing down the depreciation of nice homes, when you put a certain home beside the home. That, that, that's troubling, and that's a problem throughout Chesterfield County, a problem where I live at right now.
So we'll, we'll send that to committee, and then anybody would be available, anybody is welcome to come to that, public too. Um, so all in favor of support, of declaring temporary moratorium, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, no standing committee reports. Number twelve, uh, we've already touched on this, but Mr. Price, if you want to say anything else about lot, lot-size restrictions?
Well, I, I think it's important, uh, obviously, that we, we put the moratorium in place that establishes what we're trying to do as a county. Lot-size restriction's been talked about, um, as a means to close other loopholes that, uh, I've spoke with Derek and his staff about. There's a lot of things you can do with lot-size restrictions that would, uh, close down, uh, these loopholes, such as flag lots, for an example. I think we need, as a, as a council, to look at, what do we wanna be in the county? Or do we wanna be in the subdivision business, or do we want municipalities to be, uh, the leaders in that, in that realm? Where they have sewer, they have fire, they have police, that we're not burdening, uh, our county.
Okay, so, um, what I'd like to do is to send this also to Planning and Zoning, and the committee members for that are Mr. Smallwood, Mr. Price, and Mr. Brand. And if I could charge you guys with, and, and whomever else would like to come, but if I could charge the committee with coming up with some ideas and some solutions and maybe finding out what other counties are doing. And Mr. Price's knowledge is incredibly valuable, because you do do this all the time, Mr. Ford too. So, um, if I could send that to Planning and Zoning, and then you get back with us, then we can have further discussion rather than spending a lot of time on it today.
How far away that meeting would be?
They would set that up, yeah. Mr. Smallwood's over that.
I think the sooner the better, but, you know, that moratorium is temporary, so time is of the essence.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, um, items submitted by staff, um, Ms. Hare, where's Courtney? There you are.
Good morning, I am here today to inform y'all, the council, about the Chesterfield County Rural Water SIP grant that we have. The project is to incre, was, is to increase the water supply to Sheraw, Cache, and Pageland area, and came in under budget, um, leaving grant funds of one million eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars remaining. And RIA has expressed that they want to expend all the SIP funds for each project. And they don't wanna have to send any of the money back to the federal government. Um, with that being said, Chesterfield County Rural Water would like to amend the grant to use these remaining funds to tie into the current RIA grant we have at Lynch's River Industrial Park. And in doing this, it will significantly increase the flow to the New Lynch's River Industrial Park line, as well as supplement the water supply to the town of Pageland in the western end of the county. And on behalf of the Rural Water, I would like to request the approval to move forward with this grant amendment. And I also want to mention, there will be no additional cost to the county for this either. And I have Charlie and Julie here with Rural Water, if there's any questions.
No, this is what I believe we all, we had a phone discussion about this, and, um, yeah. It can only be used for, yeah.
Yeah, the, these funds can only be used for the SIP, um, project. So they can't be used for any other project, 'cause it will tie, the lines will, it will, the SIP lines will go all the way from Usher Street and over to, um, Highway Nine and connect to the RIA-funded line that ties in the Lynch's River Industrial. line that ties into Lynch's River Industrial Park.
Are there any questions?
So basically, we're, there's excess money, which normally never happens.
Right.
Right, 'cause it came on a...
So we're able to benefit the county's industrial park by using this extra money that we have, so it's already allocated, it doesn't come out of our pocket, but we're benefiting from it, sounds like a home.
Right, if we went ahead and move, well, we said to you that we were in support of it, just because we didn't want the equipment to be taken out and then have to come back and, and lose that money.
And it had to be tied in with this project.
Right, yeah.
What amount of the $188,000? What, what amount of?
The remaining funds are $1,088,756.
I don't see how you can not do that.
That's right.
Agree, yeah. That's great news.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yep, so, thank you. All right, so somebody like to make a motion?
Motion.
Okay. That's an easy one. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve using this excess money. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right. No unfinished business, new business. Mr. Ruffner, I'm gonna pass it to you for PD Local Workforce, South Carolina Works.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. This is something that every year PD Regional Council of Governments is required to send to each county. They administer the South Carolina Works, Workforce Centers, and they create partnerships with different entities around the region. And each county is required to sign on to the memorandum of understanding, just notifying each county who those partners are. Most importantly, this doesn't create any financial obligation or any cost to the county. So I'd request that council vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign that MOU.
Okay, is there a motion to do so?
A motion to do so.
Okay, actually, I heard Ms. Burns first, I'll take Ms. Burns, there's a motion. Bishop McLennan has a second.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. I'll sign off on that. All right, back to you, Mr. Ruffner, for EMS repeater.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Rob Wolf, Town Manager for the Town of Sheraw, is here with us today. This is an agreement between the town and the county for the county to place an EMS repeater on a town water tower. The particular water tower is located on Church Street. For those of you unfamiliar, Church Street runs parallel to Market Street in downtown Sheraw, and it'll be located on that street. And the EMS repeater will go on the water tower, and this will, my understanding from our emergency management personnel, will assist in providing EMS services to the citizens of the county. So I'd request that council approve the agreement and authorize the chair and clerk to sign, or I'm sorry, authorize the administrator to sign.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to do so. Okay, Mr. Ford, I have a motion for Mr. Ford, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, Ms. Stanley, AMR lifeguard franchise renewal application.
Thank you. AMR has requested to renew their franchise, but I don't want there to be any confusion because this is for the franchise for like dialysis treatment and nursing home treatment. You know, the other is for your emergency services, so, you know, there's a difference here, but this is just simply the franchise renewal. They submitted all the documentation, staff has reviewed it and everything, they were in guidance and everything, so at this time, we would like to request council to approve the franchise.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Kirkley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Burns, any more discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Board appointments. So it is time to appoint PD COG, Council of Governments, board members, and it's up to me for those appointments. We need one member who is not an elected official, so I'd like to nominate Michelle Stanley for that. Mr. Kirkley for the second seat, Ms. Burns to remain on for the third. And then it's my turn to, to be on that committee. I have served on, on that board in the past. I don't mind continuing, but I also would not have my feelings hurt if anybody else would like to do it. I'm opening that up. I'm currently on the executive committee, but I, I don't mind if somebody else wants a turn. We do rotate these, so if you're not going on this time, you'll have a turn if you want to. It is a meeting in Florence every other month. It does take a couple of hours on a Monday evening, so, just know. But it's interesting, it's, the Council of Governments is where the different counties in our area come together and, you know, they support us very much with our planning, they support us with our engineering workforce, so, anyway.
No, I think you need to stay on there.
Well, thank you. Bishop McLennan, I'll point you next time. No, it's a wonderful organization to be a part of, and I, I'm really thankful to be on the board, and I'm happy to do it, but I just wanted to open that up to anybody else. And I appreciate, Ms. Burns has certainly served a long time too, and I appreciate her as well for her continued service. So with that, I need a motion to approve that appointment.
I motion to approve that appointment.
All right, there's a motion by Reverend McLennan, second by Mr. Smallwood. Any more discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, administrators report.
I'd just like to thank everybody for everything, and if you ever need anything, you know where I'm at, you can get up with me, but I do, the list is so long to thank everybody. It's been 29 and a half years of roller coasters, but I'm thankful for every minute of it. One person I'd love to be able to call out that was, has been my mentor and through the years, Ronald Thurman, of those of y'all that know him, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of people that know him. He, he taught me a lot of stuff and, you know, how to treat people and how to do, those were big shoes to fill, and I came nowhere close to that, but I just wanted to let everybody, Ronald Thurman was a big impact on me in this position and what I did with the county. And the other is, I'd like to thank my family. They've been great. A lot of times Ronald taught me, you know, you put God and family first, and this is one thing I let him down, I probably put his job ahead of family a lot of times, and I do, I appreciate my family. So thank y'all.
Derek's turn now. Depends on what year it was.
I got some, I got some time I can point to you if you'd like to split it.
And, and Tim is so right, you know, Sharon really should've gotten a plaque today too, and probably the rest of the family, because, you know, we called Tim at 6:00 in the morning, we call him on set, we, I mean, he's, he's always made himself so available, and I feel like, I hope we didn't take advantage of that, try not to, but, you know, you are, you've been so accessible to us, and it's because of the love of, of your family giving you, you know, that ability to do that, and I appreciate you all too, very much, yeah.
She, she needs a plaque 'cause she had to...
She's a plaque.
She, she needs a plaque because she taught me in school more like it.
Well, thank you, Tim. Yep. So council member comments, I, I do have a comment. Because Mr. Curtis isn't gonna be able to chair the ambulance, fire, and rescue committee temporarily, I'm going to need to be able to appoint someone to do that, and I've asked Mr. Kirkley if he would take that position during Mr. Curtis' absence, and I also have a vacancy on there, and I haven't asked her, I meant to before I came in, Ms. Burns, but I was on two wheels. I was gonna ask Ms. Burns if you would consider serving on the committee until we can get Mr. Curtis back to... Would you do that? Thank you, nothing like being put on the spot, but you have lots of good experience, and Mr. Curtis would appreciate that, I know. Are there any other council member comments?
Yes, this is good. Mountain Chau spoke with, through the school board member, Wayne Chapman, Jane Sweeney, and Darrell Coleman. We would like for you and the school board chair, see if you all can get together, what, what they want to do, I'm in agreement with it, meet once or twice a year with the county councils and school board, just to brainstorm and, and build that cohesiveness with everything that's going on in the county. They say that we've never done that, I don't know, but I would like to see it happen too. Just, just a, a, a meeting, we get, just brainstorm about what's coming up, what's going on, and how we can interact because we, we need that relationship with them. We, we know our responsibility here, they know theirs, but we come together, 'cause there's so much going on.
I'm certainly willing to meet with whomever.
So, so we asking you as the chair and get with their chair and see if we can set up a meeting.
We can do that.
Yeah, once or twice a year, no more than once or twice a year, just to talk about things.
Sure.
Private being between the two boards.
I'm happy to do that. One more thing I did want to say, we were, Chesapeake County was chosen to be the location for SCADA's Institute, SCADA's, the South Carolina Economic Development Association, and it's a big deal for them to have their institute meeting this week in Sheraw, and it's gonna be, they're using our hotel, which is wonderful, and our businesses, and we're gonna have 20 economic developers who are gonna be in our county, and just to be chosen by Mr. Nance and Department of Commerce to be the location for that is quite an honor, and I will be welcoming them in the morning at the hotel. But I just wanted you all to know that Chesapeake County was the selected location. Anything else?
Yeah, I got, I got one thing.
Okay.
I'm sure most everybody knows what's going on in Pageland the last few days. We had a seven-year-old that was laying in the bed that got shot. And she's fighting for her life. So they're, they put together a prayer gathering tonight at Moore Park in Pageland at the gazebo, and this, it's just beyond ridiculous, and we can't depend on law enforcement alone to, to, to address this. And so I'm asking anybody that would be willing to come. Come, and, and if you don't want to be a part of the prayer, that's perfectly fine too, but the community's got to come together, and this is the first step to make a difference. So I challenge any of the pastors, any of the influential people, anybody who can come, I don't care where you are in the county. We got, we got to figure out something. You know, and this is not just something that's happened, you know, and never heard of before, it's getting worse and worse. So it's an event that's being put on, and it's just a get-together, but everybody in the community's gonna have to step up, and it can't be any division, it can't be any political parties, it can't be any racial relations, it can't be anything, it's got to be us as humans coming together for the, the true cause, that if we don't get a hand on some of these kids, then, I've said it, I said it on, on social media, if we don't put hands on these kids, somebody's gonna be putting hands on caskets. So we, we, we got to do what we gotta do, so if anybody wants to come, it's 7:00 tonight at Moore Park in Pageland, so I appreciate it.
And Mr. Ford, you know, it's not just a Pageland, western side of the county issue, it's, it's across our county, is the headline in the newspaper today, "Three in custody after shooting on Macedonia Church Road results in one death, two injured." And that was young people. So we definitely need to come together on that. Thank you.
That's what I wanted to, to say, it's, it's not just on that end of the county, it's on this end, and it's not just that one incident.
Right.
We've had another shooting down there.
Many, sure.
We've had several.
Right.
So it's, it's countywide.
Yeah, it is. So thoughts and prayers.
It would be nice if those of you that are here on this subject we're talking about, you would encourage your pastor to get involved with the ministry alliance in each one of these respective areas, and I think that would make a major difference.
You know, you were talking about having a meeting with the school board.
Yes, ma'am.
And the county, county board. I, I think that would be a good thing because, you know, a lot of these kids, it's, it's wonderful to get the ministers involved. Ministers aren't reaching these kids that are...
That's right.
That are out there, so as a community, we're gonna have to figure out some way to get a handle on this, some way, and it's gonna take all of us, just as you said.
I agree.
And I, and I'd be glad to go anywhere in this county, I, I don't just represent the people that are closest to me. If, if any of my constituents or colleagues or whatever need me and my big mouth to come and stand, I'm, I'm available. You know, I, I feel like it's important for us all to come together.
If one, if one of us hurt, we all hurt.
Mr. Kirkley.
I, I agree with Ethan on this. I think we need to come together as a whole community, council, the school districts, everybody. It's a, it's a problem, but I, I don't want to go without saying today that, that I'd like the public congratulate the MACB baseball team for winning the 1A state championship this week, or this weekend, so.
Sure.
Also had a young man to win the 1A golf state championship also.
That's awesome.
Got a good thing going on.
Way to go Panthers.
Athletics.
Yeah, that's great, thanks for that.
Thank y'all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mountain Chau, didn't we skip over PD Regional Council of Government for you?
No, sir, we...
But we didn't, we didn't clap and congratulate.
Oh, no, we don't need to clap. No, no, no.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I'd just like to say this before we move on. Just say that Mr. Ubank's here, seemed like before I got really a good chance to meet him this time, I say so long. Just wanted to say congratulations on your retirement. I remember just a few months ago, I got a chance to walk into his office, and he treated me just like he'd been knowing me for many years, and the love that he showed me, and it just was a great feeling to walk into your office and, and be able to leave out feeling, just like I was feeling. And it's hard not to put all of you into something that you have so much compassion for, and even there, man, I felt your spirit, I felt the, the love that you have for this county, and, you know, I, I don't see what anybody can say bad about you.
I appreciate that.
And I just want to say the congratulations, and thank you so much for all that you have here.
Yeah, Ms. Burns?
One last thing, I want to thank his family as well. We tried hard to keep him on, but we... We wouldn't have him.
We did. That's correct.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Can it be revealed what hospital the young girl is in? I make cards, like, and make cards, and I have friends that do that, and I make a nice gesture.
Check with Mr. Ford after the meeting. Yeah, thank you. All right. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? All right. Wait, we gotta vote. Any discussion? All in favor? And he's, all right, we're adjourned.